Back in session. And we left off, we were going to the details on the list. And I think we pretty much covered all of them. Did I miss any? Anyone you wanted to go back and re-discuss? Was there anything from the memo today from City Manager Phil Nelson?
Yes, I want to ask a question.
Go to that, okay. Go ahead.
I have a question about the layoffs and the incentivized early retirements of this 1.5 million. What percentage of that is an incentivized early retirement and what percentage of these layoffs?
So, half and half.
How many people lose that pay?
Seventeen.
So it's eight laid off and nine retired?
Total, total. It's within the incentive and the layoff issue would be seventeen. There's nine with the retirement incentive and eight positions and layoffs.
And that's in addition to how many positions we've already deleted over the last? Twenty-five of the police officers plus the rest of these, some of them where we worked, so. Yeah. So that's down thirty-four people. That's down eight percent from where we were four years ago.
Will that number change with the changes we made tonight?
Can't sell each even one of them?
If I could make a statement.
Yes, go ahead.
We tried to keep it to this year's budget, but next year's is going to be worse. And what it really comes down to is next year, you won't have the early retirement incentive package and you won't have the special assessments. But the only thing you can do is take money out of reserve from capital construction or something like that to buy down some of that. But again, that's a one-time buy-down. You're going to be looking at substantial layoffs for next year because that is the biggest portion of the budget in general fund.
Now with this, there's, you had mentioned in the other memo about taking .25 from the capital construction budget?
Yes.
It's not listed here on this memo.
This was just, again, this is basically to wipe out the deficit.
Okay. So, I want to discuss doing that portion. And what would that do?
I might point out also is there's going to probably be a deficit in the refuse and recycling fund for next year. So you may have to take money from capital construction to transfer to the refuse and recycling fund to buy down that deficit there.
So you're not recommending that we do it now for this because you think we're going to need it for that?
We're going to need it for that. Is refuse paying for itself this year then with the reduction in gas price?
No, we knew that. We talked about that last year.
But the gas price was different at that point. We've committed a, well.
Yeah, when we lowered it, we discussed about the fact that it was costing them a lot.
Gas was four bucks a gallon.
That was even before the gas went up. David, remember we discussed it?
We're about using 264,000 of fund balance in refuse fund this year to.
I thought when we reviewed that, page seven?
Two thirty-one.
That it was flexible based on gas, the gas factors in our contract.
I believe we just received an estimate, was it two and a half percent or something like that? I think they're projecting a two and a half percent increase for next year in the refuse, for the collection and disposal and so forth, over above our current years. We have, we may be able to squeak out next year, but after that, that would pretty much wipe out the, and the problem with that fund is that you cannot really transfer money, general fund operating monies into that. And that ends up in a deficit. We only levy taxes once a year, so it has to be, we'll have to take a good look at this year's to make sure where we're going to end up. But we may have one more year before that fund balance will be depleted. And we can't end up with a, otherwise we're going to state right up and I don't like to get one of those for a budget overrun and deficit.
Okay, so that's why it's not on this?
Yes.
This list?
At this point, we try to spare capital projects and so forth, that millage rate at this point. And that's where we're using some of the budget stabilization fund. We're sparing our reserve on designated fund balance at this point. And we put away $2.1 million a few years ago, a couple of instances where we got up to that $2.1 million in this budget stabilization fund to use in this, this is where you need to have some supplemental revenue to your budget.
When the fund was established, that was the purpose of it. Now, we have all, we have all of our numbers in on people that are taking retirements or not. Are they still, they have another week?
People who have submitted their information, they have, several came in late last week, which the deadline was Friday. They have seven days though to, after that date, to rescind their incentive. And today we have, or through Friday, there's 27 individuals taking advantage of the retirement incentive and nine that would be not replaced at this point out of the 27.
Usually though, when people start that process, it's very rare that they turn around, but they, you, well, for the time.
It's a major life event, so it's.
Yeah, you never know. Life does change, that's right. Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember?
No. Several other items have been brought forward at the council table, and I appreciate the memo from.
Can we just stick to this though, right now, on the?
Okay.
Let's go ahead, no questions.
Was your question on that one, Councilmember Belltramin? Yeah, okay. Let's finish this one, Dave, now we'll go to the others.
This 1.5 includes the nine that are not going to be replaced, and this is still what's left.
1.5 is the nine non-replacement and eight potential layoffs. Seventeen.
And we added 40,000 dollars.
Pardon? You get some other items that you want to bring up?
Yeah, well, various council members brought up items at our last meeting.
Oh, you're not finished here?
I'm not. I mean, this I think is a really serious issue. We have this material, we have others on comparing like cities and seeing the numbers. So I think that this is telling. The concern is, and I know that we've shared it before, the concern is becoming too lean to do the, to do the job we need to do. We know that to attract and retain businesses and residents, our quality services matter. And I'm wondering if we're at a point where we're looking at numbers like these, if we're able to continue to offer those quality services. I know that overall discussion in the price of government was really to look at the things that we felt mattered most, and we have. However, I think that as leaders, it's important for us not to lose our vision. I brought Vision 2020, read it again over the weekend, to look at what our community members said they wanted the future to look like. And as we sit here and continue to pull back in a reactive manner, because that's really what we're doing, in a reactive manner, let's cut, let's cut, let's cut, rather than trying to look at the things that they said they wanted and position ourselves in a place to make sure that people want to come to this city, rather than to a place that they see closing down, like other cities that were at one time known for great schools, great cities, great place to be, not far from us, Wayne County. I'm very concerned I'm moving in this direction. The whole weekend, this weekend, the weekend before, on all the Sunday talk shows, it's jobs, jobs, jobs. The most important thing to do right now is to have people work, get people to work. It's short-term, certainly. I understand the cautious words coming from our manager and assistant manager. Prepare for, prepare for next year. Next year will be worse. But everything I hear from the economics is keep people working to pull ourselves out. Otherwise, we spin into that hole. From a macro picture, I'm concerned about these numbers, particularly in terms of the Not only what it does to our ability to service our own residents, to position ourselves for the future, and our little piece of adding to that huge population in Michigan of the people who have to use Senator Papa George's office line to get through to unemployment. I think we have to find a way to work to keep our staff.
So what's your suggestion?
I've suggested before, I would go to undesignated funds.
Knowing next year that we're going to have a $5 million shortfall, so what do you do next year?
I understand that best advice, but as I said, when I sit and watch the programs on the weekend, they say get going one foot after another, after another. Will there be problems next year? We see them. But what do we do this year to get people moving, to get people spending, to get people comfortable enough? And more so, Councilmember Fleming, I think that the morale of people, I've got a job, I can get this work, when we're asking them now streamline, do this, I want to be able to do that. We've talked about that. We paid for that Zucker report. That's, is it Zucker? Was it Vector?
No, it's Zucker.
Right, for once. Which said, get them working together. But when people are fearful, they're shutting down. And I think when you look at staff, at these numbers, we have that fear going, rather than that energy and momentum we need to become more efficient, to be energized, to really say, this is the place, this is the one that you envisioned. And I think that's our role as leaders. I think it was not anticipated when we first sat down with a book that we would sit department by department clicking these things up. That's not our role, never has been. But that's where we find ourselves. So is it challenging? Yes. And I think that's why last week, Councilmember, it was last week, wasn't it? Councilmember Belltramin suggested, you know, the Chinese menu, a little from this, a little from that, a little from here. But looking at the numbers and asking for some of like cities and what they're doing, even these numbers, you again see, we're lean.
Can we get a clarification on these numbers?
Yeah, you're speaking of the sheet with the employee staffing per thousand population?
Yeah, because I noticed each of these other communities have a full-time fire department. Does this full-time employment of fire department include in these numbers?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So we're hiring two of them, including a full-time fire department?
The number of departments that those two cities don't have.
Yeah.
Yeah, we know Farmington Hills shares.
And they don't pay a legal department.
Pardon?
Branches of real estate doesn't pay, you know. Those are my concerns on that.
Councilmember?
Last week when we sat and chatted about this, we talked about some more efforts to restructure it. And I know that you said that that may still necessitate six to 10 employees to be cut. Are there any more efforts to be made in that restructuring to make it work? And I say that because while we may lose some of our classified and exempt as department heads or managers, and so they lose their management bump, if you will, but in the end, they keep a job, we keep a full staff, and the budget's reduced a little bit, and the service remains the same and probably more efficient. Are there additional efforts we can make in that area?
Well, an answer would be yes. We've studied some different areas and different combinations of going to the Service Bureau concept, and there are ways that we can do this. It's just a matter of can we still offer the same level of service even with the reduced number of people? Because when you really look at it, you've got police, fire, and public works make up 68% of our employees. Out of the 436 employees, about 295 are those three departments. So it's a matter of if you combine those others, what levels of service are available?
I don't necessarily buy that restructuring those departments in the Service Bureau will lower the level of service.
In some cases, if you don't have the people to meet customer demands or for solutions, there's going to have to be some give and take as to what services you offer. And it could be that some programs have to go. Some programs that people have gotten used to over the years, but it's just a matter of how much money are you willing to put towards those services?
An answer to that? I am, and I think that this was done with the first cut, but quite honestly, I am less willing to fund those programs that don't serve a significant portion of the population. And I, I trust that you did that with the first cut, and if you did revisit it.
We most certainly did. We tried to hit all of those programs and objectives, or outputs, I should say, that you said were high, intermediate, and basic. Majority funding went to the high priorities. A certain amount of funding went to intermediate and the basics. We were cutting those programs altogether or a nominal level of funding that would keep them going to provide service to those people that take advantage.
So these layoffs that are being proposed are all in that, those low priority categories?
Yes. And next year, they'll creep up into the intermediate priorities.
I understand what Mary's saying about keeping people to work, and I know that our citizens expect a fairly level of service for what they feel are really high tax dollars.
And I, and I think it's important that we still have the ability to tell our story. I know that Councilmember Fleming a long time ago talked about what are we doing to get our word out? What are we using on the web? What are we using? It doesn't have to be expensive, but again, that we keep that drumbeat Troy's the place to go, Troy's the place to go, Troy's the place to go. So when I look at these numbers, I don't know where the layoffs are coming from, but I know that we want to continue to be out there so people think of that's, that's it. That's the place I want to be. It has the programs for my kids, it has the parkland I want to see, it has a quick and efficient response, it has all of those things. I can't tell from this on the page what the sacrifice is. But I fear that we, you know, we're just letting the numbers come from wherever. Someone's in a position to take any, no?
No, no. No, we, as we stated in the memos and every memo to this point, we have tried to hit your outcomes, the three outcomes that you set, and the 39 different outputs that you put together and ranked. Those in the top 13 got the highest level of funding, those in the middle 13 got a moderate amount of funding, those in the low 13 were either cut out or received just a nominal amount of funding.
And I'm not trying to debate with you. Clearly, the majority of the employees that you just mentioned fall into our key areas. We believe that a city should be about police, fire, and, you know, so that makes sense. It's just in the rest, whomever took, who was eligible for retirement came from departments all over. I'm not criticizing you on where you looked for it. I'm just saying, I don't know how those all shook out, except that tonight, you know, we have this document. So when I'm putting together my city services here, you have an advantage because you're actually looking at that piece. I'm not looking at that piece. I'm reacting to that piece. And that's where I'm troubled by it. I don't believe that that should be our role. I don't believe that that's what we should be doing. We really should be thinking long range. We should be thinking, what can we do to get people to come here? Because the more people we, that come here, whether they're businesses filling those places or whether they're residents coming in here, that's how we create that vibrant city that can be sustainable.
Yeah, I understand you.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm just sharing thoughts, and I have, I could face this way. I'm sorry, I could face this way.
Councilmember?
Along those same lines, I think we did put out a huge challenge when we said we want entrepreneurial departments. And I think the biggest challenge, I mentioned this, is to our parks and recreation, to get programs that people want to go to and they're willing to pay for. I mean, it's an instant feedback when people decide that they don't want to do your program. If you're offering a service and people aren't willing to sign up for it because they don't find it's of value, they aren't going to sign up for it. And you have to figure out what programs are going to interest people and cover your costs, I mean, basically, and keep that vibrance going. And that's going to be, I think that's the biggest challenge in future budgets, is the fact that we said we want to get as many of these programs as possible to pay for themselves in parks and recreation. Obviously, if we get to the point where there's no funding for anything below those top 13, we've got a significant problem. But to get as many of those programs that are below the top 13 self-sufficient is the real challenge for long-term sustainability. And the extras supporting themselves, like the Chamber of Commerce, self-supporting, and it provides great services to our community, but.
Let me put, pose something for you, to think about. The library, by any standard, brings a lot of people in it. There's a huge demand at the library because parking is impossible. However, it's not paying for itself, even though the programs are supplied through Friends, which is a nice, again, so if you're using that kind of standard, that's something that would be an investment, yet it may not have fallen, certainly didn't fall in the top 13, it fell, fell below.
But the library is a great example of those entrepreneurial spirit where they've had the videos, where it's paid to use, where they had the video games, it's paid to use.
I'm arguing.
You know that better than I do.
Well, I'm just bringing up an example of something that may have fallen below, you know, when we're saying, oh, you know, it's, yet you can see that the people, that our residents and others love going there.
Right.
It's, it's successful.
Yeah, I mean, long-term, all the programs that can be self-sufficient are going to be 100% protected. We've got the limitations of a 10 mil maximum if we did have the override and an override on, I mean, these are further out in the future. We're talking this year's budget, next year's budget, I see way out in the future. You ask the questions, have we cut to the maximum? If what's prudent and reasonable for the critical services? And then you look at what else other options there are. But at this point in the process, we've had several hard years. This, I think, is our first really difficult year. We're using a new tool this year, which we're all learning in the process, I mean, throughout the city. We're going to see how long this tool works and keeping the highest level of services possible, given the resources we're allocated.
Well, the difficulty for us is going to be to continue to provide services with the city until our taxable value can start rising, when the economy starts doing better. There's a lot of businesses that have come into Troy. When I talk in the state of the city, there's a whole list of good things that has happened in 2008, even with the bad economy. But we can't cut to the point where we're not offering what's going to draw people to come in, because then they're going to start looking at other communities and saying, I want to go there instead of to Troy. And we've been fortunate for many, many years to have people come to Troy, and it's been a blessing, both, you know, our residents and our businesses. But with the values going down, less money coming in, but our task is to keep things still running along smoothly and have as little impact on people in the community as possible. There's naturally going to be some impact. And I think we're all fearful of what kind of impact it's going to have, and some of it we may not know until it actually occurs, and then you, you know, try to shore it back up again. It's like after having an accident with a car, you know. You have insurance to pay for things, but you've still got to get the car fixed, you've got to worry about if you had injuries, you know, all that kind of stuff. And the wear and tear on you while you go through that, if you've ever personally been through an accident, you know, it's a horrendous experience. So we're kind of in that mode. I use that as example because it's like we're in the middle of an accident, and yet we have to come out on the other side and make sure we have enough things in place to make everything whole and right again. And yet we have to come out on the other side and make sure we have enough things in place to make everything whole and right again.
Ben? Yes, Councilwoman Brumford?
I'm just sitting here listening to all of it. I, I think we're all kind of preaching, preaching to the choir. We all want the same thing. We keep talking about, um, you know, wanting to maintain, which is very important. Wanting people to move into Troy, to work in Troy, all of that. I think every community is struggling. I don't know that there's, um, we're obviously in competition with other communities to have people move in and start, build, start or move businesses here. But I think across the board, we know that, Michigan, the whole country, everybody's in trouble to some degree. And I think we're being very wise as a council. I, I wish we would have done this a couple of years ago and things weren't so loose. But we're doing it now. We're having to prioritize. And we do want to keep people working, we do. But we also have to look out for oh nine and oh ten. And I, I, I listen to the economists too, and they say oh nine's supposed to be, as we've been told by our management, forced to oh eight. So, in looking at these accounts, it's hard. We've got to plan to maintain, maybe not grow, maybe, you know, not maintain what we have. Look at the priorities that, that we've set. Begin to work up. And when we get into our mid-range, dipping into these funds that we've set aside for this kind of stuff, but we dip in too early, well, we're setting ourselves up for bigger problems. And again, yes, we want to be, we want to be that vibrant city, but everybody is, is suffering across the board. And, um, I, I, like I said, I think I'm preaching to the choir here, but I think we have to be realistic. And it's not oh eight, it's not oh seven, it's not oh six. We are going into a huge recession, if not already in it, and it's going to get worse. And I, I don't plead doomsday, but it is, it just is. And we have to make prudent decisions now.
Councilwoman Fleming?
No, it, it's not augmented. Troy is still one of the greatest cities to live in, in Michigan. There's so many positive things here. Yeah, we're doing tough things, but at the end of the day, this is still going to be a destination place. A place where people want to come and live. It's a safer city, great needle systems, great, great parks. We're not taking away that. You know, we're not really taking away that. We're leaving a lot of this infrastructure in place. And I think we still, and you mentioned this, Councilwoman Kerber, I still don't think we promote Troy enough, said that for a long time, because it is a great place. And the way our seventy-five winds through here, I mean, it's just, uh, there's so many things that we've got on, on the block that we're working toward that can just continue to make us even more attractive. And we have to promote that. And we're sitting here doing tough things, and nobody likes layoffs, whatever. But at the end of the day, this city, Troy, is still going to be in much better shape than the majority of the cities in this state and in a lot of cities around the country. We still have a lot to, to be pleased about and proud of here. And we want, we want to keep that. And I don't think anything we're cutting is going to take that away. And we just have to be, we just have to be positive. It's the tough things to do, but the concern is, you know, we don't want to dip into, we may have to dip into reserves at some point, but right now, I think we'd be premature. And I think management's done an excellent job of keeping us on track here and trying to, 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 you know, as, as Councilwoman Beltramini said, you know, take from different areas and come with a balanced budget. And I don't think, there's really a lot of pain here. We're talking like it's a lot of pain, but really it's not because we've never gone through this before, you know? It's going to be painful for a person that has to lose their job. But we're not talking wholesale layoffs here, it's not that group of business. We're talking tweaking the departments and fine tuning and so forth.
You can say that, it's not one of the eight.
That's what I'm saying, if you're not, if you're one of those, but when you're talking out of, how many people, four hundred?
Well, again, it, it's, it is pretty thing because we just shook out all those retirements. I guess, again, you know, um, the police department is fabulous. We retired six with two hundred years. We got another retire, I mean, this is, uh, a mourning period. Those officers, those wonderful, um, people who meant so much. I mean, that, so there is, is definitely, at least, at, at least as far as I'm concerned, I mean, there, there is mourning. I've always felt that way, you know how I feel about ERIs? I think that, um, I greatly value those who've invested a lot in, uh, a lot of years, a lot in building relationships. And I do mourn them. I mourn them, uh, every day. And these eight, I don't know where they're coming from. Will we have those who will, uh, be promoting, those who will be attracting? Of course, we have a wonderful city, but we still have to be able to get our story out and be known for those quality services, the reasons we all moved here. We are an ecosystem. I know you talked about the car, I'll, I'll talk about the ecosystem. Again, if I talk about Livonia, a, a, a city that was a fabulous city, great schools, uh, much, and then started peeling away from the edges. It's an ecosystem. We hurt one, those exemplary school districts will also feel what happens when people say, I don't, I could go to that one instead, I'll move across over there. That hurts everyone. That hurts test scores, that hurts our ability to attract a return. That hurts viability.
Uh, Rep. Tim Holland?
Yeah, you know, before we, before we get into this whole layoff thing, I've got some questions and I'd like to see if we can exhaust some other theories before I build it. Anyway, the first question is, um, on this, uh, this memo we received today on the back, it says, "Layoff notices will go up to staff members a week from today." My first question is, why so soon? Because the budget here doesn't start until July and what? Curious as to the, um, speed with which we're moving here.
Basically, to take the cash that we save in salaries and put that back into the general fund to carry over to have additional funding.
Now, would, um, it says here that those who were considered for layoffs but eligible for the early retirement incentive package have been notified. Did that change anybody's position, encourage them to take the early retirement?
Uh, well, it was one or two.
Okay.
In addition to the, uh, the timeliness of this, we are in our budget process right now. Departments next week have to have their budgets to us. We need to know the bodies that they're budgeting for. So that's why we need to move on it. The money is one thing. The other thing is we need to know where we're standing when we put our, when I get the requests from the departments and review those and how many bodies are there, what the body count is for each department. And that's, um, one of the reasons for everything was tied to this, this, um, January and February timeframe here for budget purposes.
Another thing is, um, you said our current headcount right now is approximately four hundred and thirty-six, right?
Right.
And roughly, it's my understanding that, um, the average employee here is looking at about a two percent pay increase, which is, comes out to about eleven employees. I know people have told me that I'm crazy, but I've heard it's done before. I think we should at least see what the feedback is from union and non-union employees to either voluntarily or through contract have a give back to save as many of those positions as possible. I don't know what structure would be. Some, I've heard in some cities it's voluntary where people check off and they say, I want to give back two percent of my salary because I was, and you can, you know, you go through that, it takes time. But, um, you know, I, the, it's my understanding that, you know, that, that the folks that work here are like a family. And I know that, um, I mean, call me crazy, but I would certainly give two and a half percent of my pay in order to protect some jobs. But I think we should try to. Another thing I think that I would, that I would like to get some information on is the, um, we spoke at the last meeting about the Brownfield redevelopment authority because their first project is already paid off. And I would like to see those funds, or at least I would like to know if those funds are going back to the city and to the county, how much additional funds we will be receiving in our general fund. What else? And again, if I don't answer this question, I don't know the answer. Would it make any difference if we extended the early retirement timeframe, maybe another three weeks?
As far as budget numbers, it would be extremely tight.
Well, I know that if, if, you know, if you say that you might get laid off and then you tell somebody, well, here's your pink slip now, you want to take the early retirement, it might make a difference.
If, if there are some people who are in that group that are eligible for early retirement, they've been notified and have either taken action to accept it or, or not to accept it.
Anyway, those are just a few thoughts that I had. And, oh yes, must not forget, one thing that always comes up, um, every year for me is, uh, community center fees. And I think I would like to see us, again, rationalize those fees. And, um, again, I, I'm not implying that we need to increase memberships by twenty-five percent, but just look at it and see if we need to be giving such a large discount to families, for example. Look at it, um, take another look at it. I'm not going to micromanage. All I'm saying is it's, make sure we're charging what we need to be charging there. Because if, um, if that needs to be changed, that will certainly have an impact on the, um, parks and recreation budget. So those are the thoughts that I had.
If I could, oh, respond to one thing. I did receive a letter from an Ask Me group today and did want to meet with me to talk about salaries and those kinds of things. So there are some, have been some input from other unions anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm quite, you know, I, I would much rather, you know, get rid of positions through people voluntarily leaving, you know, than layoffs because we are talking about people here, families and that sort of thing.
Councilman Eisbacher?
Yeah, the, the other two things we had spoken about...
Say it louder, sorry.
The other things we discussed, I brought up in the last meeting, was our car, car allowance policy. I know from, from personal experience in the private sector that cars are becoming much more difficult to, to, uh, to get from a, a private employer now. And also the longevity payments that you guys mentioned at the last meeting that had already been given up by all the unions. The fact that the unions have given it up is very impressive. And I think it's only fair that echo across the board. I have no idea what the number is behind that or the cars, looking at, obviously, a person that's required to be on staff twenty-four seven and respond immediately, that's a daily part of their job. But personnel that are not, it's a perk and not a requirement. I think we need to look seriously at that.
I thought we already did cutbacks of that quite a few years ago. You remember, John, about cars? We did. That's been a long time.
The, um, it was less expensive for the city to do the car allowance. They had multiple cars that were assigned to those departments, almost half the cost. That's why they went to that, the car allowance program.
Is that for like driving around town cars or driving to conferences or educator?
Whatever you have, if it's, um, Phil, uh, Public Works Director or whoever it may be, any driving around, any job-related, um, business that is driven, they don't get mileage for that. They get, there's a car, they go to a confer, or they go to whatever. They drive around town and reviewing the snow plowing and so forth and put ten thousand miles on their own vehicle. It's their own car, there's a car allowance that, and it was cheaper for that route than having a city truck or whatever assigned to that individual. And that's why we went to that a long time ago, quite a few years ago.
What about pool cars?
There's a pool car, well, someone has to pay for it, so I mean, but there's, there's a certain cost for that vehicle.
Instead of having it assigned to a particular person, have five cars at City Hall there?
Well, it's, we've, we've looked at that and, um, it's, um, something that could be looked at again. But I mean, we've looked at that and we think we have it down to where we have the most cost-effective way of operating that with the allowance versus assigned dividends.
Do you have any idea how much the longevity payments would be? Is that enough for a person or is that...
Oh, first of all, there's a lot, most of them are through a contract negotiation, so you'd have to reopen up negotiations.
Is there only one union left? I thought you said at the last meeting that all of them have given up or...
For new hires, all of them have given up for new hires.
Current hires have not given up.
All, all, just all employee groups which are part unions and union representatives, they're eliminated within five years.
Peggy, can you stand up to that because I'm not hearing you way over here? I know, but I'm not hearing you. The mic might be.
My voice isn't helping.
Thank you.
All employee groups have given up longevity for new hires roughly around nineteen ninety-three. They rotate five years or so. It was, it began with the classified exam and it was gradually negotiated with all of the unions.
Okay, I thought it was the entire union, not just the new hires.
No.
No, no.
One other thing I had on the list, and I know it's not nearly enough for rescuing a job, but the perks that council receives, I'd like to have that as a, a discussion item and look at where council members' budget can be reduced. And I know we've reduced spending over the last several years.
I think with all the suggestions that are being made, it, it only comes up to, you know, a couple hundred thousand and we have to come up with a million. The, the layoff and early retirement can incentivize employees is a million five here. So, I mean, it's, it's good to have, and, and we should be looking at every way we can save money. But still, in order to come up with large numbers and the fact that, that, uh, the majority doesn't want to take it from unreserved, undesigned funds, uh, even a, a portion coming from there would still keep us at having a high percentage.
Councilwoman Beltramini?
I, I want to go back to something Martin said. And I understand the Brownfield redevelopment authority fund is, we continue to capture, to build up kind of a revolving fund here. And do we need a, a significant balance in that fund for things like when the pavilions came and we gave the credits? And, and do we need to have money in that fund to do that? Or is that a credit situation where maybe for the short term, it might be worth our while to transfer some of that money back to the county and the city? Unless, by doing that, we can't get it back. And that's my question. Once you open that Pandora's box, then you have to renegotiate it, yeah.
I think Mark Mellor wants to...
Since I've been a little more involved in the ERA, the one thing that I've come to realize is we do get charged by MDEQ, um, review fees, especially if a project doesn't go through.
So we need some money.
Yeah, I mean, there are potential for charges that MDEQ if a project doesn't go through, such as the last going, if the pavilions doesn't go through, then potentially they have charged to us.
We need, we need funding in there. I'm not saying we need all the funding that's in there. We think we have, what, five years or so, five or six years that we're accumulating those funds and it stops at that point. This may be our second, I think, year in that cycle. What it does provide, normally, when a Brown, new Brownfield project comes on, normally that project looks to fund that improvement for that property. What you have, if you do have a large project that comes on, it may never be able, may never be able to recoup those costs associated with that project with, and depending the size of development and so forth. Pavilions, because of the size and so forth and the, the new developments, what's going in there, they would be able to capture that money within the period of time that they had that scheduled out for. But you may have some smaller sized ones that, um, they may not be able, depending on what type of rem, what they have to do to remedy the property, whether, whether or not. I'm not saying, I would say that's one area to look at and I think we'd have to, there'd have to be some changes to our existing plans, whatever, on that, but, um, it's one area to take a look at. Brown, we are accumulating funds. We may not need to accumulate, um, all those funds there.
But then the legal question.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I will certainly do a memo for you, but when the Brownfield was created, it has to be, the funds are segregated and they have to remain segregated, so you can't move it back and forth.
No.
And so that's, that's one thing. But secondly, um, if, one of the ways to, I guess, stop accumulating it would be to do away with our Brownfield, but then we'd need to recreate another one. Um, and also there are the pavilions, that is an outstanding obligation that, uh, you know, that's out there. And so it may impair that as well. So, again, I'm happy to, to do the legal research if, if you would like me to do that, but, um, I'm, I'm very speculative as to... but I'm, I'm very speculative as to, I don't think it can be done. I'm happy to look at that and see, but my gut reaction is that there are insurmountable obstacles.
Mayor. Mayor Proton Haralak?
My recollection is revolving fund is optional, not mandatory. Also, it's my understanding that the, if you have a project, we're not going to advance funds to a project unless it's going to go through. And my understanding is you can bond that, and if you have a project, you're basically going to be creating in that present value, you'll be bonded. There are, you know, the key thing to start with is, you know, the number, how much are we talking about here? You're talking about hundreds of residential units and you're talking about the Target and that whole row of big box stores and then you've got the outfielding and where Papa Vino's is. You've got a lot of real estate there, so I think we do need to consider it. And I don't buy into the concept that the county doesn't deserve their funds either. And then the county has made some very difficult decisions with pay freezes and all those sorts of things too. And I, I don't like the idea of what we basically look at, of what we're trying to basically do, you know, a quick take on the county. I don't think that's, that's true. We live in Oakland County. We do have an obligation to care for all of our community units to which we belong. I think, I think it's a good idea. And, you know, if, you know, you might, you know, yeah, that's pretty much all I'm going to say at this point. There, there are a tremendous amount of opportunities there and that are very much legal and relatively easy to do with.
I want to explore one more time a portion, not a great portion, but a bad portion of the undesigned and reserved funds. In the memo that we received January 21st, one of the suggestions, number four, was that we utilize 2.3 million from the fund and keep a 10% reserve total. I know that a majority of councilors won't touch that at all because they're looking at when they may have to touch it next year or the year after. Even a lower figure would save some of the positions that we're looking at by using some money from that fund. So I, I want council to at least consider that when they're looking at terms of using some of that money, which would still keep our reserve at a good level. It would be above 10% level if we use less than the 2.3. If we used even a million dollars from that fund, it would make a big difference. I don't know whether, did you calculate using, if we use that total amount, if we used a lesser amount, what that would mean? No? Okay. Because you hadn't had a majority say they were interested. I know the stabilization fund was mentioned and you did something with that, but I'm just exploring this one more time.
Capital was mentioned.
Right, and capital construction. Yes, Mr. Lammerow?
You could use up to the 2.3 million dollars and still have a 10% reserve.
Right.
So that's, you have 2.3, whatever portion, anything less than that, then you'll have a greater percentage of reserves. Anything less than the 2.3 million?
Are we at 13% now?
Over 13%.
Pardon?
A little over 13%.
A little over 13%?
Thirteen and a half, I believe.
Because it's a percent, that number goes up each year, our general fund budget is smaller.
Correct.
What's going to happen this year is that, which was stated, when you do have 27, just through the retirements, 27 employees, majority of those are in the general fund, not all of them, but a majority of them are. What you do have is you'll be adding to your, your fund balance this year. Time, the time that those positions that are going to be replaced are replaced, could be several months, and that money flows into it. Your budget next year could very well be less than the current year's budget. So that would increase your percentage of fund balance too. So that's where, those are all kinds of factors that flow into the fund balance.
Come on, let's go for Dave, Councilman Isbacher?
I'm concerned that if we use, let's say, a million dollars from our reserves this year, we're going to need that million dollars again next year, a million dollars a year after. Looking at making not happy cuts to our third level of service that we prioritize. I'd see our reserves for our second tier and definitely for our first tier services. Not when we're early in this process, like I said earlier, even though it's going to be painful.
Councilman Belterman?
I'd sooner take, and I said this last week and I still, and I, I respect the city manager's desire to retain the extra mileage in the capital construction fund, but I would still like to take a dime or 11 cents out of that, which would give us about half a million dollars more if we do that. And then, the problem remains with trash and we need to do something. Either we ask for a small increase so that trash pays for itself, or then we talk about taking a few hundred thousand dollars out of the reserves. But to do it with a million now, let's see where 25,000 dollars here, 40,000 dollars there, plus, like I say, a dime or 11 out of the capital funds would get us, and that may handle the layoffs that we're talking about. Because I, I do think that we, we keep talking about communicating our place in the world of how wonderful we are and we are the place to go, and while that's a wonderful message, if you look at the priority of services that we gave, primarily communication services are in the red. So we have to do that through delivered good service. And we all admit that we're lean. I mean, we know that we're lean. The question is, are we lean enough? And we've cut back 8% already. That's, that's the reality. So like I say, I would sooner cut the capital projects to try and balance this before I took any money out of reserves. Because I, I do agree with David. It's a million this year, it's a million next year, and then by the third year, you don't have enough. And then you're not laying off, it's like when we cut and gave everybody back $5 and we said, you know, at some point we may need 750 back. Well, now's the time for 750, but this is the hand we're playing. So this is what we have to do.
I'm going to.
Go ahead.
Possibility of layoffs, it's a very difficult discussion, especially during these times. We do have some departments that we've analyzed that maybe the workload is not there that we've had in the past. So we're trying, I think we've looked at, we freed up 27 positions and nine of those are not going to be replaced through attrition. It still leaves several that, some are specialized positions that you, some of these people may not be able to fit into. There are some that they could possibly go into some of the positions that are going to be freed up here, that are scheduled for layoffs. It's very difficult. No one, I mean, I, I hate, I hate the thought of it. I mean, it's been bothering everyone, it's been bothering a lot of people. But I'm also, we're also faced with a task too, that you look at, we have certain departments that maybe the workload is not there that they used to have in the past. So do we keep those departments fully staffed to avoid layoffs? Well, in these times, we can't. And that's, I think, where we're at here. We've, I, I would hate to see anybody lose their job, anybody, especially during these times, because it's going to be difficult to find another job. But we're also faced with a task of trying to look at our whole city operations. And unfortunately, there are some areas we'd like to see more activity in, but there is not that activity and we're not in the boom years of the 80s and 90s. And that means that there may be some excess in those areas and those are the areas that we're trying to target here. Hopefully, some of them might be able to be placed with our, with our retirements that we have in those areas. But I don't want to see, no one wants to see layoffs. I don't want to see the management, no one wants to see layoffs. But when you look at the time now, there are certain areas that it's, I don't know, it's difficult to justify some of the staffing in certain areas. That's all I can say.
And John, I don't disagree with that, and I guess that comes from when I said restructuring in the beginning. It's not, I guess, the question is, what services do we want to deliver? What services do we need to deliver? And we need to deliver them at least at the effort, at the level we're delivering them now, if they are services we want to need to deliver. And if we don't need a person here to deliver that service, but we need another person over here to deliver this one continuing at the same, then can this person be moved to there? And if they can't, and that means we have to hire somebody different, well, I agree with you. We need to do what we have to do structurally. But I am about maintaining the level of service and as many current employees as possible, even if it means they have to move departments. And if they can't move departments, then, you know, we can't sacrifice the organization.
Well, we're committed to the best level of service we can do with the employees that we have. And it's definitely geared towards council's priorities and those core services and so forth, but we would not do anything to lower a level of service. And we're looking at areas that the, the demand for that service may not be there. That's the areas we're looking at, without facing our public safety, without affecting other areas. So like I say, I don't like to see, I don't want to have to, I hate to go through it, but there are certain areas that there's not the demand for that service.
Mr. Nelson, are you signaling that you wanted to say something there?
I think the whole thing boils down to, I've had to lay people off before, had to lay 20% of the staff off in Colorado. When you watch somebody walk across the parking lot with their personal belongings, it's not a good day. At the same time, we're trying to wipe out a budget deficit for this year, knowing full well that the next three years, you're going to have a budget deficit each one of those years. We've looked at consolidating, we've looked at merging. Now, we see, when you walk around the building and you see one department who just got through a really crushed period of times and they're not so busy that week, that you walk down to the next one and they're insane. People are waiting at the counter. Why can't we move a few people down from that area to help them out in this situation? It's a matter of changing a culture, changing a structure to where it's one group of employees rather than a specialized silo of employees. And that's the next step of, you know, we're trying to do this with community development, we're trying to do it with community engagement. Those departments that look at service or public service or customer solutions, those kinds of things, can they be liked functions? Can be merged, maybe with not the same number of people, but have more people who are not specialists, who do those things on a day-to-day basis. Those are the next steps. But you have to change the culture, you have to change the focus of what you're doing. And when you only have so much money to work with, you go high priority and you go intermediate priority and you go basics. And some of those are going to suffer. If those services are still offered and there's still people taking advantage of them, the level of service may have to be at a lower level if we're going to do all of the things that are above those lower level services.
That's what we told you about.
Zach?
Well, with all of our discussion on this tonight, where do we stand here on the final numbers? I, I see what you have in your memo that we agreed to. That we looked at having fewer layoffs if, if we look at some money from the construction fund. Correct?
Capital.
Correct.
From the capital fund.
Right.
There is always the hope too, with the stimulus package passes, that Troy may get some construction money there, that the capital construction fund could be not hit as hard.
But we won't hear.
But we won't know that.
For?
For quite some time.
Several months.
And police, I believe, is, police is in there as well.
Right, yeah.
But those again are not constant funds.
Right.
I understand, I understand, but still, it's a balancing.
Right.
A little bit goes in there, a little bit comes out here. And that's what I understand is.
That's what this guy is excellent at, is balancing what we've got to, what we need.
Now, we've had some general agreement on quite a few items tonight. Are you looking at coming back with something at the council table for us to vote on or what's the next step here?
These measures will be in a resolution form, so it will give us strict direction as to what you want, what you don't want, and what we can add, and then we can do the numbers.
Okay, Councilman Kirwin?
I guess I, I understand you need a quip. Are, are we meeting next week? No, is it two weeks?
Sixteen.
I guess on that kind of resolution.
Sixteenth, yeah.
I think we need to have a good conversation about that. I mean, we've been up there before, where we've had the resolution there, and it was difficult to have a true discussion about it. And I'm trying to figure out a way to, to do that through a meeting like this, a study session, or designated time before we walk in there to do that resolution. An open meeting, whether that's special.
I mean, the 16th, let's say the, the hour before we have the council meeting on the 16th?
Have a conversation about it before landing on the table. There'll be a lot in there. And I think these, this is, this is where you build consensus.
That's what I thought these meetings were for.
Glad to have seen the resolution.
What, what, Councilwoman Kirwin is saying that after we see the information, which we'll get, you know, before the meeting of the 16th, meeting before, meeting in a study session before we have the general.
That's what you'd like to do.
Regular meeting. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that's what I'd like to do.
Then we'd have to set a meeting at this meeting if we're going to do that, and let's discuss that. Mayor Proton Haralak?
Maybe we just need a little clarification as to what the city manager meant when he said the resolution. Is the resolution simply formalizing the things that we have agreed on tonight? Or is it because, because there are still certainly a number of open points. You're not talking about formalizing open points, are you?
No. No, we're talking about the ones that you said you favored in this list.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we need to talk about that. Again, we've already decided how we're going to handle snow plowing, what we're going to do with the tickets and fees and all those sorts of things. You're like a formalizing that. I think we're done.
I, I guess what, what we're trying to do is shake out enough money from here and there and fees and so on to see what impact that would have on the eight potential layoffs.
Oh, yeah, I thought there were.
Yeah, that information we don't have yet. So if we could do it in a half hour, I was saying an hour before because it always takes us longer than we think. So if we met at 6:30. We could discuss it. That way we'd have a chance to look at those and then if we want to do any adjusting before we actually have the vote. Yes, Councilwoman Brumkell?
I'm also nervous about adjusting things. Half hour, hour before meeting. We've given staff direction to write a resolution to shake out monies from some of this other stuff to come back with a resolution that perhaps could reduce the layoffs. We meet a half hour, an hour before. I don't know what that will achieve because they have to go and crunch the numbers. We're not going to send them off again to crunch more numbers because I wouldn't recognize it. We're taking their recommendations because we've given them a general direction. So we get the resolution, and the resolution is what it is with the direction we've given them this evening. To sit and talk about it, to come up with, okay, well, we want to rewrite it because we don't, don't think you got enough. enough crunched out or something. I, I mean, we're, we're at the end of the road in discussion, for me, in giving them direction, and we need to get a resolution to come back. And if we have personal questions, we can certainly do that. I'm not opposed to getting together and talking, but I'm opposed to getting together and rehashing and then sending them off again to tweak it again when we, we've been doing this. That's just...
But I think the, as I read it, was that the discussion ahead would be so that we were comfortable with it, so that when it came to the table, remember we had the resolutions before, and we weren't ready for it, and we said, no, no, we're not ready to vote on those? And, uh, to make sure before it comes to the table, because these, these will be, you know, heavy resolutions for us. Instead of having all of the discussion occur when it is the item that's before us, there will be some discussion, of course, at the table. But it was an opportunity, like when we do a, a brainstorming session, you know, with council or something. We are, I know, but we haven't actually seen the final, we brought things up, we haven't actually seen those final numbers. Look at the difference in the memo that we had last week and the memo that we had for this week.
Right, but the, the next one we need, it's going to be...
The memo we have now, we have more to changes.
I know, but I'm just using that as an example of how things can change after we have a discussion. So, we've had a discussion tonight, but we don't, we've got to give them a chance to get, get it back to us again.
Mayor, maybe...
Yes, uh, Mayor Patel, how are they?
Maybe the thing to do is just to have a recap of what's going to be on there, because this is at least the sixth time we've discussed this. And there are still some open points. I think we need to make a decision on these things and then move on. We've got a lot of work ahead of us. So, if we could have a recap, so that everybody's on the same page, and we can do it now, then I think we're in good shape for the resolution.
Do you have all those numbers with the suggestions from tonight that you're able to give us a recap?
They should have all the charts that were submitted, but it has a favor on it.
Right.
Those numbers are included, which I already talked about, we have those items. And the only thing that we have that we've, tonight, was the items that were listed on this memo that you received, using the budget stabilization funds at two fifty.
Right.
We've already, the portion of it, retirement incentive, was already in the initial numbers of a million three. That came out about half of that amount, and the layoff portion is another portion of that. These other ones that are listed here...
We talked about.
We talked about tonight.
We talked about.
I don't have any other than business occupancy permits of whatever that number may be, if it's thirty thousand, or twenty-five, or thirty, or whatever it is. That's the only really thing that was added.
You brought up about the...
I don't know that that may be part of the resolution, because there's no ordinance yet, and you have no real numbers on it. I mean, how can that, we can put a figure, we can't put a figure on that.
Uh, we may have to do the ordinance at the same time, if we can get some of those written. That's the, that's the time for it.
You're not going to have your ordinance by the next meeting.
Two weeks.
No.
Or, or budget purposes, for budget purposes, which we have several months, as a matter of fact, if you'd like to see that, thirty thousand, or what, come up, if we can come up with an estimated number, you have four months to come up, five months to come up with a ordinance. We're timely in terms of...
Councilor Bell, to me.
How do you guys feel about money out of the capital? I thought we had that conversation...
Well, we had that conversation last week, but then we didn't go there.
It didn't show up here.
Yeah, I know, that's why I...
But it was more not.
Hold off now.
Had it revisited.
That was one of the columns, you know, a little bit from everything.
The, uh, the question I have, too, on the capital is, is it would be interesting to know what impact that's going to have, if any, on, you know, our five-year capital plan that we reviewed at the last, you know, as part of the last budget, to see what exactly we're going to be not doing, if you will, especially with streets and things that are really obvious to people.
We can give you two different numbers. We'll add ten cents, whatever, and then we'll also look at capital impacts of taking that money.
And then you have a resolution that does maintain that.
Right.
Okay.
Two items I just saw, we didn't discuss.
Which one?
Buy distressed property in Troy.
No, we decided we weren't going to do that, because that was money that we didn't have.
What we didn't want?
No. The other one is the, um, contributions to community agencies. Wasn't in the memo, but it's in the green.
But we talked about it, because it's already listed here, as about reductions. That's why I brought it up. Remember when you wanted to go down the line, and I was jumping to that, because that was a big item? I said, let's get it out of the way. I always like to take the hard stuff first, David.
Okay, so we're good.
So, we really don't need a meeting. Is that what you're saying? Are you going to be comfortable?
Sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I just was trying to make sure...
And the only thing that we were looking at is the capital, a little bit of capital.
We'll see two, we'll see two, and then we can...
But we may not need to use the capital home back in case we need it for the refugees later on.
And we'll talk about two, we'll see the impact.
They're going to give us the information, they'll all know. Okay. Are you folks ready to hear from people that want to, that came tonight, if anybody wants to speak under the public comment section? Mary Ann Bernardi? Remember, the mics are all up here.
We're saving electricity.
Oh, right, that was one of the ideas, I thought we could turn this on and down.
We did.
I do want to thank you for having us in more daylight hours, and that's really a good thing. Um, and I don't know if it's worth repeating this. I didn't hear you talk about even one sentence towards it. And in your last meeting, I asked you about the lobbyists that we're paying seventy-five hundred dollars a month for, and the transit center, which was, I heard the meeting, where you allotted millions of dollars to get. That would wipe out, if we had a two million dollar shortfall in the general fund, and you allotted millions to the transit center, why is that not up to discussion? What fund is that coming out of? It's, you know, I, I know I'm a resident and not on the council, but could you explain to residents, where is that money coming from? You were talking about millions, not thousands, millions, for the transit center, and seventy-five hundred a month for a lobbyist for the transit center. Where is that money coming from? I mean, you didn't devote one word to that. And, I mean, that would wipe out the deficit right there. And at the rate we're going, I think that it'll be a matter of a couple of years, and we'll be losing our police department or fire department, and the city will be gutted. I really see that happening, because I, I think we're seeing here what has happened in the country, is that we're not doing the hard things we need to do now to forestall disaster later. And I think it'll come. And I think, um, a lot of things were, today went by the board that should have been done. Like, for example, when we talked about Troy days, I don't think any city staff count should be devoted to Troy days. When you're talking about layoffs, firing people, and then you've got them working at a carnival. I mean, I, you know, it doesn't make sense to me. It, it doesn't seem logical, you know? In a family setting, if you can't put food on the table for your family, you don't start adding a dish and, you know, another bedroom, and up the floor. I mean, you, you, you stop planning like that, and you start worrying about feeding the family. And I, and I think that's a mentality that we have to get to here that isn't here. And then I heard a comment about the perks of the council. Well, that would only be two hundred thousand dollars. Well, yeah, it would be two hundred thousand. No, did I hear that?
You heard that wrong. Sorry. It's like seventy-six total, and that includes our salary.
Oh, all right, okay. Okay, sorry, not bad. But I do, did you consider that, though, looking at, okay, all right. Business occupancy permits, I heard, I heard this comment from somebody in business who I can't give the name, but said that in Troy, it's very, very common for businesses that are already here to move in, get their permits for, say, a certain X number of employees, and then turn around, they put cubicles up, and they alter the space in the building without pulling permits. And they can have two and three times the number of people in those spaces that they were permitted for. So, they exceed it dramatically. And then, he said that goes on all over Troy. So, I think that there should be more, more inspections, not only when new businesses come, but to the existing businesses as well. That would create jobs. And we, yes, we need to create jobs, and we need to keep jobs. And I disagree with it. It's okay to let people go. I don't think it's ever okay to let one person go. And, and, and I, and I certainly don't think so when we're doing things like paying for transit centers. We can live without a transit center, we can live without a lobbyist, but we can't live without our police department, without our fire department, without refuge, without our roads being repaired, without keeping our staff here. These are things, basic needs that we need. And mass those hierarchy of needs, I think we have to go back to that and look at our basic needs and stop this pie in the sky kind of mentality. Let's look at the reality, where it really is. And I also think the, you made some great, great ideas, Councilman Howard-Lax's idea about the Brownfield Development Authority. I would like to add to that, that the DVA in, in general, I know there are all kinds of structural problems about asking the DVA to donate any of this tax money to the general fund, even though the general fund is used to support them. But I, I think that, that long-term, we should start looking at restructuring, even if it means going to the state level, whatever it does, and restructure that whole concept of downtown development authorities, so that these businesses are not allowed to just keep that tax money on a very small, limited area in the city, when the entire city needs money invested in it, and not just one road. And I, I think, too, that is, well, I disagree with Councilman Howard-Lax's comments about inspections of rental property. I think they're a good thing. You hear all the time about people who are renting having to live in properties that are not kept up, that they're dangerous, electrician, the electricity is dangerous, the sanitation is dangerous. And it sounds as if, well, all they have to do is pick up and leave. Well, poor people can't just pick up and leave, and not everybody has the money to pick up and leave and go to a better house, especially in these times. And so, they are vulnerable. So, this is a valuable service for the person who is there renting that home, and it is a, a, a service that our employees can continue doing their job. So, we're saving jobs that way, and we're creating revenue as well. So, I think it's a wonderful idea. And I think that, okay, and I think the car allowance policy and the longevity allowance was a good idea, and we travel and call for councils. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, we appreciate everybody coming, and staff coming again. Thank you for being in general.